5:00 PM and we're going to start an informational session regarding the budget for 2022. Let's all start by saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening I had a special request from Councilmember Borzakowski. He admitted to me before the meeting that it was his 47th and 48th budget cycle here. So, Councilmember Borzakowski, if you would.
Thank you. Just to make a correction, it's my 45th and 46th.
Yes, I apologize.
So, just to note, like I say, this is my 45th and 46th budgets, budget session and have been through many. And there, I don't think there's a budget. I think even Manager Sarvi can even say there's not a budget that I've ever been through where we can just sit back and say, boy, everything is really here. We can afford all this stuff. We can do it. And just like this budget, as the budgets in the past, they're all going to be challenging. And this one, of course, being challenging as well, too. So, and just a reminder for council members, if they, you know, if we don't know it, we do have line item veto power. So, anyone on council can pull one, one line item. And you get a second. We can vote on it. We do have the right to take that out of the budget and also to put something in. So, does that sound correct, Madam Clerk?
Sure.
Yeah, I know we do have, I know we do have line item veto power, so.
I don't think we've ever seen that before, but I think it's your budget.
Yeah, so, okay, with that, like I said, just thank you, Mayor, and look forward to working with everyone tonight, so.
Okay, we'll start with City Manager Steve Sarvi.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. On the, on the agenda for this evening, the schedule, Tom Williams, Chief Williams, won't be available today. So, we're going to proceed right to Leslie and then Brian, and then Chad will follow because he's going to be here anyway for the next two days. Rather than read the letter that I'd already sent, I just wanted to outline a few things before turning this presentation over to the department heads. As you all know, the pandemic over the last year and a half has stressed the city in many ways. And the full effects probably won't be understood for some time to come. While we have been allocated funds from the federal government, more on the way, what those funds can be used for, it's not entirely clear. We have not included these funds in our operating budget because they are one time, and I don't believe that it's prudent to use them for operational needs. Managing city operations through the pandemic has had a number of interesting experiences, to say the least, especially as we've had several staff turnovers and retirements along the way. I expect that as our team continues along, we will see an increase in retirements. This situation has allowed us to reevaluate city operations, especially staffing needs. As you know, I haven't filled every open position that has occurred over the past year. And we have found innovative ways to work around having fewer staff on hand. Cross-leveling people and equipment has allowed us to still deliver services, but with a smaller headcount. In the police department, for example, the coup position has allowed us to maintain a steady patrol force while getting closer to the community policing than we have in recent years. When snow needs to be removed or tree work done, we shift around resources that we have, and we found ways to accomplish the task at hand. The budget presented includes not filling many of those positions going forward because of our innovation and the work that we've been able to accomplish with the staff numbers that we have currently. In the middle of all this activity, staff is proceeding to make changes to our budgeting process that we think will lead to long-term strength. Recall that the council has approved working with Baker Tilly to develop a fiscal plan for the city. That will happen this fall. We will start by updating or enacting fund and general fiscal policies that will help staff meet the council and community needs. I expect that our consultants will offer many suggestions, and hopefully, some of them can be enacted as early as this fall. I trust the council will work closely with staff to develop these plans and policies. Despite these challenges, we are looking forward to dealing with the issues we face so that the long-term outlook for the city remains solid. For tonight, each department head will address the council on what they foresee will be their 2020 projects and priorities. And then we'll go through the budget sheets. The level of detail depends on your needs. We can go line by line, as we have in some cases in the past, or just talk in general terms. Please ask questions as we go along or save till the end of the presentation. If there are questions that we need additional information on, staff will take notes and provide updates at tomorrow's meeting. The goal is to provide a preliminary levy and budget the council will adopt in September. Remember that the levy set in September cannot exceed the final levy, which is set in December. If there are no questions or comments, we'll begin with Chris Hood, City Attorney.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I will just give a relatively brief overview of the legal services budget to try and give you a little context in terms of what types of services my office provides to the city. As a general overview, we provide over 5,000 hours of legal services to the city each year, which is a substantial number of hours. In that capacity, we serve both as general counsel to the city on all of the cities or most all of the city's civil legal services issues, as well as serving as prosecuting attorney for the city, prosecuting the city's misdemeanor and gross misdemeanor criminal prosecutions. The council sets policy. We do not set policy. We implement policy for the council. So, that's our role as City Attorney. It's just a general summary, I guess, of the criminal prosecution services. We, we see about 700 criminal prosecution files per year. And again, those are misdemeanor and gross misdemeanor prosecutions. Within that, we provide all the services related to those prosecutions. It is a very time-intensive and paper-intensive practice. And it includes, you know, basic arraignment services up to and including court and jury trials. We do, on average, about three to five jury trials a year. And I don't know if any of you are familiar with jury trials, but it's, it's time-consuming to do those. On the civil side, again, we serve as general counsel for the city, which means we provide all the city's civil legal services. And that's everything from day-to-day questions that come from department heads. We probably field, you know, two to three legal questions a day on a variety of subjects. If you look at, you know, any given council packet every couple of weeks, typically about half the things on, or the agenda items on, for a council meeting, involve our office. And that includes everything from, you know, contracts to land use and development. Again, we field all of the municipal questions for the city related to data practices of the meeting law, you know, all of those types of typical municipal issues. We're also involved in the city's ordinance drafting. And that includes, and it's really a collaborative process with staff, drafting ordinances for the city and then the research and development of those. Additionally, we provide legal services in any lawsuits that the city may have or that we would initiate, to the extent that those are not otherwise defended by the League Insurance Trust. Again, we provide a very broad range of services. This is just an overview. We also deal with a lot of state and federal agencies for the city. And that could be, you know, FAA with the airport, Army Corps of Engineers with the levy, PCA with the wastewater treatment facility. So, again, we have to have a broad spectrum of knowledge and experience to try to cover all of those issues. So, with that, I just wanted to give you a little context, I guess, for what we do for the city. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions?
No, I would move for tentative approval of the City Attorney's budget.
Second.
We have a motion from George, second from Michelle. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Just one question, if I could, Mayor. Now, do you have an office here in Winona yet, too, or any representative in Winona?
We do, yeah. We have an office in the River, 111 Riverfront Building. And we have a prosecutor and a paralegal that work out of that office. Our prosecutor actually has just taken another position with the Streeter Murphy Firm. So, if anybody knows of a good prosecuting attorney, we could, we could use one. But I'm serious. Put them in contact with us. So, yes.
Steve Young, there's a job.
Are you an attorney?
I know I am not.
I just want to say, Chris, it's so nice to see you in person. It took me a minute to realize how long it has been.
It has been quite a long time.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you for coming down, Chris.
Chris was Mr. Stupalophagus.
Is that how you thought of him, is Mr. Stupalophagus?
You never actually saw, I understand.
You never actually saw him.
Mr. Stupalophagus. I get the reference now. I'm kind of dating myself with that.
Yes, you are. Yes, you are.
I'm glad it worked with Zoom, but it's really nice to see you.
Well, on behalf of Mike Flaherty, myself, and Sam Hanson, we thank you for allowing us to be City Attorney again for another year.
Thank you very much, Chris.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Now, we'll move on to the City Clerk's portion.
Good evening. I'm sitting over here in staff table. Steve asked that we just highlight some of the projects that we'd be working on in the coming year. So, as you know, the main role of the City Clerk is to produce the council agendas and the contract processing. So, the last quarter of this year and into beginning of '22, we will continue the implementation of our eScribe Agenda Management System. And one of the modules that will be a challenge for each of you is there is a portion of module for the council members to be able to access within the system and not just after we post them. So, you are able to view items and send questions to staff through that portal. So, I'll be doing training for each of you, you know, probably two or three at a time. But that's coming in the coming months or early in '22. I also work on maintaining the city code on the city network. So, it's available for staff and also on the city website. So, it's available for the public and for you as well. We also process all the liquor licenses, car dealer licenses, gambling licenses, et cetera. And in '22, it is an election year. However, it's not a presidential, so we'll only have two elections. And I, I hope it's only two. And that will be the August primary and the general election in November. For transit, we are hoping that the state will fund three new transit buses. So, I'll work on getting those ordered in '22. Our information right now from the state is they're so backlogged on, on getting new buses that it's unlikely we'd see those buses until 2023. But at least we'd get them ordered next year. So, with that, the specific items that I have, you see the list. The revenues on page one, I deal with both the cable franchise fees and electric franchise fees.
Monica?
Yes.
Dare I ask where Charter is in the negotiation portion of this seven-year struggle?
I had a conference call with our consulting attorney last week, Wednesday, and things are not looking promising.
I mean, sure.
I mean, it, it was a step backwards. The, the draft that we got from Charter last week was not a step forward.
Connected to that, is that what I'm seeing on page 11, the 15,000 budgeted for legal services?
Correct.
Okay, so we must have a special, specialized legal counsel dealing with this, this issue, not our city attorney?
Correct. We, we work with a law firm from Minneapolis. Brian Grogan is the attorney. We've worked with him for over 20 years.
Okay.
He represents many cities in Minnesota on cable issues. And Charter Communications is not making any progress on cable renewals anywhere. So, he has a strategy that he's going to try. And, and then we will likely need to come back to council and at a separate time and do another update. It was disappointing, the, the last draft that we received. So, onto the page one, those revenues, there's cable franchise fees and electric franchise fees. And our estimates were based on kind of where we are in, you know, 2020. And the, we also looked at the, the trend in '21. Liquor license fees, I am not recommending an increase in the fees for next year. As you might recall, we did, well, you approved a 10% reduction in the fees for this year. So, that means, just going back to that number, means a 10% increase in what they're actually paying. Under the line 32109, it says business licenses and permits. You'll see a bit of an increase there. Well, in the actual, that was quite an increase. That is where we're putting the revenue from our new massage therapy licenses. So, that will be in that line for '22 and beyond. Any questions on the revenues? Always next is page eight, Charter Commission. We just kind of have a placeholder in the budget for some very minimal office supplies. As you know, they have not met in probably a couple decades. And currently, there is no Charter Commission appointed by the district court. So, this is kind of just a reminder that it's out there, but it is not functioning. Yes, Monica, so it hasn't met in a couple of decades. What is it supposed to do when it meets? So, the purpose of the Charter Commission is to review and recommend changes to the city council and the city charter. So, I would, my, my response would be that I guess they haven't met in several decades because the voters don't think there's anything that needs to be changed in the city charter. There is a procedure for the council to amend the charter if you saw a glaring need and, and if the Charter Commission was not in existence. Thank you. Then on to the Human Rights Commission. They are active and they have, they meet once a month. And each year, they do have both an annual essay contest for the Winona area students. And they also hold the, or they ask for nominees for their Latch Award. And they will be making that announcement in the next few weeks for who, who is the winner for this year. So, they have a pretty minimal budget, but they are active. The Cable TV Commission, that is where we're putting the legal fees for the cable franchise agreement. The Cable Commission has not been active. We need more members. Right now, we're down to one member, so it's hard to meet with one person. And it's been difficult to find people who are willing, who are interested and willing to serve on that commission. So, there's, there's five seats, but there's only one person currently. Then, page 15 is elections. We did bump up the wages for the election judges to just a hair over what the new minimum wage is for Minnesota. So, I think it's, I think we budgeted something like 1050 an hour. So, that's, that'll be a bit of an increase. And when you look at the 2020 actual, keep in mind that did include three elections. I had originally requested funds to replace all the voting booths. That was reduced from the budget so that we could reduce the tax levy a little bit. But that would be something I would be requesting again in '23. I'm not sure how old those voting booths are, but they are pretty rickety. And it's getting more difficult to find parts, if we knew, to replace, you know, the legs on those.
Monica, those would just be the, the booths themselves, not the counting machines, correct?
Correct.
Yep.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Monica, do we get any assistance from the state or the federal government with our elections for machinery or any type of equipment? Or is it all our, our expense?
So, for the assisted voting machines, that's those large machines that allow people to vote without assistance from people. Those, we received some, a significant amount of it was covered by federal grant money. The counting machines is a, there's a cost share with the states, the county and the city. So, we're not looking to replace the counting machines. Those were just replaced in 2019. The assisted voting machines, the state has not certified a replacement for the machine. So, until the state certifies what equipment can be used, we can't replace it. So, we're, that, that, those machines are pretty outdated. And right now, there's no state grant money to replace them. So, I don't anticipate that being switched out in '22, but hopefully '23.
Thank you.
Any other questions on elections? If not, move to one of my favorite budgets titled Central Communications. And I always think of Michael Scott and, did I skip? Oh, I'm sorry, skipped over City Clerk. The main part of my budget, yep. Well, I still, it's still like the office, but yes. So, that's myself and a portion of my administrative assistant salary. That's Tina. And then the big expense there is for our Agenda Management software package. That'll be an ongoing cost, but it saves a lot of staff time. And we will be rolling that out for all boards and commissions as well.
Do we have a timeline for when it'll be available to all boards and commissions?
No.
That's okay.
That, hopefully, by the end of this year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
So, we're kind of right now debating, do we roll out the portal to the council members first? Or do we roll out to the other boards and commissions and do council last? And I haven't decided in my head which is going to be an easier route.
Okay.
Or.
More efficient. Let's use that word. Yes.
Yeah. Okay, so that's pretty much it in City Clerk. Then, page 72, the Central Communications. That's the, the accounts that we pay for things like outgoing mail, copy paper for all city departments. The copy machine in the third floor. Our LaserFish is our document imaging system that's citywide. So, there's some, the ongoing maintenance for that system. Also, the city hall or citywide telephone system that we have through Matrix and then the phone service through HBC. So, I don't have anything new requested in that budget. And then on page 147 is the Transit Fund. There is a reduction in the amount that we will be doing for Winona State because, as you know, they are no longer requiring the routes that went to the St. Tease campus. And a year and a half ago, Winona State and St. Mary's eliminated the Safe Ride program. That was the Friday and Saturday night routes between campus and downtown. They are still not in, well, St. Mary's is more interested in, in re-establishing it, but not in the coming year. So, again, the request will be for three new buses. And we are looking at a project to do some installation in the bus garage that's located out by the central garage. And we'll be requesting funds from the state to cost share on that. So, it would be 80-20 split with the state grant covering 80% of it.
Monica, related to the purchase of those buses, is, is there any, any cost sharing with us or is that all federal money?
That's also at an 80-20.
Okay, so we're, we're in for 20. Okay, thank you.
Monica, building off of that, that money's coming from the Transportation Fund for.
Yes, we have currently a pretty healthy reserves in that fund that will cover the cost share for those capital projects.
Monica, I have a question. Maybe it's a little late to the game or not appropriate question at this time. But are we looking at potentially switching our, our buses over to electric at some point?
Well, it, we purchase all our buses from the state, off the state, state contract. And currently, there's nothing on the state contract that includes electric buses.
Okay.
If we do not purchase off the state contract, we would be required to do the whole purchasing
Sure.
procedure.
Okay.
Which is pretty time-consuming and.
Are we still capable of getting the 80-20 on something like that, if it's not in the state inventory system?
I don't, well, so electric buses are significantly more expensive than a traditional bus. So, I don't know what MINDOT would fund, if it's 80% of the traditional bus or if they would say, sure, you can buy an electric bus, but we'll fund at this level and you pay the extra. The other thing that you would have to factor in is where do you plug them in?
Right.
And how long a charge does it go? The city of Rochester is currently purchasing, I think, one or two. And the staffs there said it was a tremendous struggle to purchase. And they're a much larger city, and they get their federal money directly. It doesn't go through MINDOT. So, you look at, you need to reconfigure your bus garage. And how long a time can your bus run without needing to be recharged? Our routes go 12 hours.
Right.
So, there are, I mean, we.
There's challenges there still.
More challenges than I think we could overcome for next year.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
And the, well, and the third thing is I'm, I'm not sure that there are electric buses available in our size bus.
Okay.
It's their class 500, which is much smaller than the, I think it's a class 800 that Rochester has.
Thank you.
Yep. That's, it's on transit. That's, it's on transit. If anyone else has questions?
No, but I've moved tentative approval of that budget.
Motion by Michelle, second from Eileen, all those in favor? Motion passes.
Steve, can you remind me who's next? Is it Chad or is it Leslie?
Leslie.
Okay.
Thank you.
Chad will be last after Brian.
Oh, well, sure.
She's got her George list.
Ready for George, wow.
Every year it's the same one, so you have to be prepared by now.
Good evening, mayor and council. First off, I want to start by summarizing some of the prioritized projects we're finishing up. Started this year and will finish up in twenty twenty-two as well as what we're going to be working on next year. We're very excited to unveil our new youth services space post renovations that gets punch listed and. Carpets cleaned this week and then within the next few weeks we'll be moving that collection back downstairs. And hopefully it will be safe to hold some sort of open house to showcase it and eat some cake. So keep you posted on that, you'll all get an invite. We, in that space, we've emphasized comfy seating in a new teen young adult nook. With added USB charging stations as well as a mural project facilitated by our artist laureate Sarah Johnson. The teen artists have been very passionate about getting to create something for the space. And having an area specifically dedicated to them. So it's been exciting to bring that age group in. And hopefully they'll spend more time with us in the next year with their own nook. We've been working on creating a private meeting room space in our former CD DVD room off of the art room upstairs. That will come to fruition next year. Our very active and generous friends of the library group. Has sponsored a new desk in the children's area for staff as well as a new reference desk for staff upstairs. So both of those will be finished within the next month and will help us better serve the public with increased ADA accessibility. As well as updated electrical and data for technology needs. We have new family engagement programming launching in January that will support early literacy and school readiness at home. In digital literacy updates, we are working to increase our wifi access and portable circulating hotspots next year. Those have been very well utilized since the pandemic with learn from home and working from home. We'll continue to partner with adult basic ed and community ed, offering adult learners access to online modules for. Learning how to read, creating job resumes, managing personal finances. Among a lot of other areas of need. We'll also continue to partnerships with the Minnesota DNR, offering the state park passes. For checkout, which has been very popular this summer and has been extended through next summer. And then we'll also host the interactive karst driftless geology exhibit. Which is a very cool Carlson Business School project that's been making the rounds around the state. We'll be maintaining current collaborations with our partners at La Crosse Public Library and UWL on community reads projects like the Great River Rights Programming. And Park Rec has been graciously hosting our roaming readers and storytimes this summer. And we've gotten wonderful feedback on the hiking club as well as having the kids out in the parks with sharing books and stories and. We're trying to continue that into the future. Our most popular adult program before the pandemic was book bingo and trivia nights at Island City Brewing Company. So Samantha's working with the brew pub to bring that back when the timing is right. And our Bell Art Room monthly exhibits are already booked out through twenty twenty-two. With a variety of local artists wanting to share their works at the library. So the main things I wanted to point out on our budget. On the revenue side, I, I do want to note that if you look at the county grant funding. That has stayed the same the last couple of years. Selco advocates hard on our behalf to increase that funding at least for COLA. Every year, three percent, two percent, trying, trying to move that needle. And as you can see, that has stayed stagnant for the last few years. And then internally, we are trying to write a few things with the library's budget. To include budgeting for depreciation. As we know, the books will have at least fifty thousand dollars a year in depreciation costs. And then if there are. Building needs to maintain those, of course, depreciate as well. So you'll see that fifty thousand budgeted in for this next year. Any questions on the revenue side?
Oh, I have a, sorry, go ahead, George. Just that we had eliminated fines for our materials last year and was just. I know it was a odd year, but what was the feedback on that?
Thank you for mentioning that, Eileen. Yes, we have gone fine free in the last year and that has been very well received and the timing was definitely right. Who knew that we would be heading into a crisis situation with the pandemic and a lot of households' financial needs? So definitely people have been grateful and we aren't seeing an uptick in lost materials or increased. Damaged materials, people are returning items and are appreciative of the reprieve. And kind of just taking the whole negative connotation of the library out of the scenario. It's a positive place. We want you to come with your families. The days of shushing and wagging fingers and finding people are not serving us anymore, so.
Now, as far as the county share, they're giving, what do they call what? Minimum maintenance of effort?
They do just a little above.
A little bit above that?
Yep, MOE or maintenance of effort.
Okay.
However, we certainly would be appreciative of more. I can, I feel comfortable saying that with the, the county leans on us for a lot of services. We help a lot of county residents that come our way based on the county's recommendation. Go see the librarians, they'll help you do that. And we're happy to do it, but it comes at a cost.
Right, okay.
I have a question, Leslie. Do you have an idea of the amount of revenue that the library may have lost due to the pandemic by any chance? I'm assuming you were operating at a bit of a deficit because we lost revenue there.
Yeah, it's, that's a hard one to quantify for a couple of reasons. Certainly. We were closed for that short window without any curbside service, but we reacted, I think, fairly quickly. And came together and came up with a brand new service model and software. And the curbside was very well received and actually those circ stats were, were booming. So. The other thing that happened over the pandemic unrelated was that Selco changed their software. Reporting, so to, to run those reports isn't as slick as it used to be, what the access I have for that kind of thing is, is harder to quantify now anyway.
Okay, but you can, you, you can acknowledge that there was some revenue loss based from the pandemic, okay?
I would think that's fair to say.
And, and mayor and council, that, that's an excellent point because we believe that's one of the few things we can. Hang our hat on for reimbursement from the, from the federal government. So we're looking at library, we're looking at the pool, another recreation and the campground is being the main sources that we think we can reimburse the city for.
That's exactly why I'm asking. And then is it fair to say that the library is one of the busiest in the region? But has the least amount of material? So we're constantly asking for other, for things from other libraries. Is it the on-hand stuff that we're short?
So it's fair to say you're, you're, you're partially correct in that we are one of the top five libraries in southeast Minnesota. It's fair to say we have the smallest budget.
Okay.
Out of the busiest libraries in the state. We do, we have a fairly robust collection, but we are still an active interlibrary loan borrower.
Okay.
We borrow more than we lend.
That's, that's what I was getting at. Okay, that's, that's the stuff I needed. Thanks.
Yes, Leslie, can you quantify or can it be quantified? The amount of services given to county, county people? And compare that with the amount of revenue we're getting from the county.
Yes, Selco has done some reporting advocating on our behalf. With those kinds of numbers and, and we do know we are underfunded from the county for the return on investment. But by percentage, I don't know what the latest is. In the last like three months. I, I can get it for you.
I was gonna say, is that something you can share with us?
I can.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, if, if I could ask and, and either you or Steve, if you could possibly answer. So we've talked about possible losses due to COVID. When would we be able to quantify that? I think, I, I'm, I'm understanding we can backfill some of those losses with, with some. Some, some federal money. So how do we, what, 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 what is the process for that? And is that showing up on, on any of this paperwork that's in front of me?
No, it's not showed up on here. I think the difficulty is if you're open anyway. You know, how do you show that you're not, you're not generating that? And, and we like cut fines, that's one source of revenue. We, we just, one of the big things for us, and it's the same with FEMA. Is if you don't fill the paperwork out right, it's hard for justification. So we really need to be clear and we're not clear what the rules are from the federal government.
Okay, we still don't know.
We, we know that it's an eligible reimbursable expense. What we don't know is how they want to see it quantified. So we, let's say that we say it's a hundred grand and we move a hundred grand into the library account. They come back and do an audit and we're like, how did you get a hundred grand? We want to make sure that we do that as accurately as possible. And the way I would look at that money, of course, council can look at it differently and tell us what you feel, but that's almost like a windfall for us. And so, you know, we'll reuse that in the libraries to rebuild materials and that sort of thing. As opposed, we would certainly not want to use that operationally going forward because it's a one-time fund.
Right, okay, thank you.
So mayor and council. Excuse me, just a couple of clarifiers. One is. To focus on just the revenue is half, half the picture. So there's not a lot of revenue coming into the library. It's LGA tax dollar. It's, you know, it's that middle column on page one seventy-four. So certainly there was a reduction perhaps in library cards or. Lost or damaged items, or again, we went fine free, so there, the revenue amount is. Potentially rather low, but if you turn to page. One seventy-seven. And if you go to six one eight forty-five, five eighteen, sixty-one, twenty-nine. That, that's the other, I guess what I call half of the picture. It's what, what Steve is also referring to is. It's not also the revenue that was lost, it's the expenses that we had that were directly related to COVID. And that what, that line gives you at least some indication of what we spent on those emergency. Really is COVID expenses. So it's, you know, fifteen thousand. Four thirty-three is, is how we categorize those expenses. That's what. Also Steve is referring to is the FEMA trying reimbursing that. So it's the combination of. Probably likely a lower amount for revenue lost. But it is those expenses in order to go curbside and run the operations based on COVID that we would also try and recapture.
So just to clarify, I say revenue, but what you're really saying is there might have been expenditures that would fit into that budget piece. Or that funding piece that could also be allocated from those dollars. And possibly forever the pot, the world has changed significantly enough that there might also always be people who want curbside pickup. And so what you're suggesting is that we look at beyond revenue, that some of the expenditures we wouldn't normally have had. Could also be put into that dollar amount.
The, the hotspots, some of those things. And, and we did do, I believe staff did a really good job of, of coding that so that we could go back and find it. We may have missed a few things. That's why we want to be really careful when we finally submit it. And, you know, we'll get as creative as we can to make sure that we're capturing every dollar that, that we can possibly get reimbursed.
Thank you.
Leslie, how are we doing on donations? I mean, do we have earmarked donations for a certain thing or are people still giving donations?
We have donations we count on every year that we, we've come to expect. From some of our sponsors for the summer reading programs, say. And then we, the, the other part of our contributions, donations comes from our Friends of the Library group. And from memorials that, that folks may send in, in, in memory or in honor of a loved one. So that's, it, it's a little harder to budget for. We don't always know what to expect or if we'll hit our target. And you'll notice we, we're taking in fewer. Planning, but revenue side, we've lessened what we're going to take in and contributions and donations for next year.
Thank you.
Really want to get away from taking that donation money and using it for operational needs. So it's one of those things that we're trying to make some small changes. And eventually we'll get to the point where we're not tapping that money. The library is using it as it's intended by the person. Which I think is happening already. Right now it's just sort of the general money that people give. So if you donate for a specific book, you get the book. If you donate for a chair or something. But if you just go in general, we just want to make sure that we're not using that in the future. It's going to take a while for us to get there though.
So I'm so glad to see that we're doing depreciation now because I think that's a more accurate picture. And I think in, at least in the meeting I had with Steve, Chad, this Steve. And Jessica, we talked about making sure that we start adequately budgeting for the library's actual yearly expenses. From the general revenue from the tax stream. I think we're making a move in that direction and I think in conversations that we had maybe all at once isn't possible, but. I'm glad we're making a move in that direction because it's unrealistic to have you come out looking like you're in a deficit every year. When we should just be funding it. And whether the county does it or not, I think your, your hours of operation don't. Look right for a library our size that is so well-used. And I think. If we could maybe increase the hours, it would be easier to make an argument to the county as well that. Well, yes, we're open more than four days a week or whatever the schedule is. We actually have open hours and you're making a lot of use of it. And I think that is the trend I hope we move to. I think that is a well-loved building. I'm, I'm gonna guess, and we will hear if I'm wrong. But I'm, I'm thinking most people won't object to paying higher taxes if it means they have a library like ours that's available for their use long-term. But I know we can't sustain what we're doing, had been doing in the past, so just wanted to say that.
George. Are the books on tape still very popular?
Audio books are very popular. Of course, technology has taken us on a streaming service now for a lot of that called Overdrive or Libby. Which is a subscription-based service that we get through Selco through an annual contract. And people have an app on their phone and utilize it well, but we do still circulate compact discs. Books on audio.
Cause I know a lot of truck drivers that are going to make a run across country would come down and pick up. Four or five books on tape and take them with them as they travel across.
I did it for years, years and years.
It's a great way to get a story in.
So I'm gonna ask the question I ask every year. Have we made any strides to whether or not people can donate their digital copies of books to the library yet?
We have not because that is a publisher licensing issue completely out of our control. It's, it's copyright.
But they can't quite figure out how to make it work. But I could give you a movie or a CD because it's physically in your hand, but they're concerned that I might keep a copy. Of the book and then donate the book to you. Is that what their big worry is?
I think it's, when you, when you personally buy one, it's a single use. And for a library to circulate one, you need a different kind of license.
However, I could donate books to you.
True.
So to me, it's like, I know it's not your issue, but every year I hope that you're going to come back and tell me they've finally figured it out. So never mind.
Mayor and council, maybe we should have Monica work on that with.
Monica, do you have some extra time?
Yes. Okay, where were we? I did want to point out, and as Steve mentioned in his opening, we did account for a wage increase for temporary employees. We are a building open six days a week with them primarily part-time staff, staffing the building. So that was important to remain competitive. In hiring. And I also just wanted to mention, the building does. And I also just wanted to mention the building does still need tuck pointing. I'm going to look for some grant funding for that instead of going through the CIP process. So we'll see how SHIPPO responds in their next round. And finally, I was, I was going to mention the, the loan payback on page one seventy-eight. This is your sixth of a ten-year loan payback. So twenty twenty-six will be our last year. I believe to see that fifteen thousand in the budget.
I have a question, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Do we, what, I'm, I don't have the CIP in front of me. What was the estimate on the tuck pointing?
Ninety-nine thousand.
Okay. I would love it if, if, if a grant doesn't work out, I think we need to address that sooner than later just because, I mean, all of our city buildings have things that are, could be affected by water and things like that. But not so many of them hinge on them the way that the library does. And that is one of our most, that's one of the buildings that we tout the most as one of our historic buildings. I think we should take care of it.
We, we will definitely keep an eye on it. If the grant's unsuccessful or if something changes environmentally, we'll come back with a plan probably through facility fund.
Great.
If it's that important. But again, I've challenged staff, go and find grants where appropriate and match it with city dollars if necessary. But this is one building that's, that's, I think, more than eligible for a project like that.
Yes, and I think like many maintenance things, it's better to address it ahead of time than when it becomes an emergency. Oh, I, I just also wanted to thank Leslie and the library staff because having been one of those part-time employees, I, I know how busy the library is and the fact that we're, we have one of the best libraries in the region and most popular and that you all manage to do all that you do every year being, not having a massive budget is impressive. And I would love it if we could grow it in the next few years, especially for extending hours because the services that the library offers are so crucial to the community.
Thanks, Eileen. Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, real quick, I, I, I think Eileen might have pointed out to me what I was seeing here. I was looking at your requested amount, one point three seven five million and, and then recommended one point two five five difference of a hundred thousand. So I think I found ninety-nine of it. Is that the tuck pointing?
The CIP, yes.
Yes, okay. I'm just adding up numbers. Thank you.
And we reduced our, our overtime request from a thousand to, from fifteen hundred to five hundred. So that's the other thousand.
All right.
I would move tentative approval of the.
Mayor, just one more question.
Oh, go ahead, George.
I haven't seen this before, but bond and faithful performance, fifty-two dollars, sixty dollars. What is that? Is that insurance?
Insurance, in case they do something nefarious, which librarians are want to do.
I see the premium is very low, so.
Yeah, their risk is actually kind of low, but they, they take that, you take the total number and we divide it out by the department based upon, as you can imagine, the police fire, it's a little high, it's much higher.
A little higher.
Okay. That's all I have. Okay.
Thanks, George. Anyone else have questions?
Mayor and Council.
Go ahead, Jay.
I mean, we're about to end Joe DiMaggio streak. Are you sure you don't have anything else, George?
You didn't ask the, the question you always ask. I waited.
It was already touched down about the past due fines. I've been asking that for ten, twelve years.
At least.
The past due fines, so that's already been addressed. I change it to bond and faithful performance, so I'll be asking that every year.
Okay, any other questions at all?
I still move to tentatively approve.
Yep, motion by Michelle, second from Eileen. All those in favor?
I agree.
Motion passes.
Good job, Leslie.
Thanks, Leslie.
Yeah, Leslie, thanks a lot for everything that's here.
Here's where we can cut now.
Thank you, thank you.
So that is so much more relaxed.
Yeah, I love it.
I like it.
Okay, we now have Brian Frang. Public Works Director.
Yeah, I guess we'll start with some of the major projects that we got coming up next year. And I guess one of them is kind of starting this year and finishing next year just due to the timeline that we bid that at due to the state's lack of reviewing our plans. You have not seen the Broadway project start yet. It is going to start this year, but they're not going to get a whole lot done. So they'll be basically completing that project next year. So that's one of our bigger projects.
And by Broadway project, you mean?
The, the pedestrian ramps and such.
Yep.
Yep. Yeah, that's a, I mean, it's a, it's a very nice project. So that will be mainly completed next year, barely started this year. Just contractors are busy. MINDOT did not get their plans reviewed very fast, just a victim of circumstance.
May I ask a question about Broadway?
Sure.
Do you know what end they're going to start on?
They were supposed to do one of the school crossings this year, you know, Mankato, Washington, Huff, et cetera.
I see. They're going to break it up by location based on use.
We're recommending they don't do that this year. Some schools can be starting and, and in progress. So they'll probably start on the non-school crossings this year and they'll probably stay in a certain area, you know, just efficiency.
So the other part I wanted to ask, because I can't remember what we discussed, but is this where we're going to make uniform crossing paint so that all of it looks the same along Broadway? I think we've talked about that for years.
Actually, the opposite of what you should do. You tend to put the higher visibility ones at the more crossed pedestrian places. Your Main Street, your Huff Street see a lot more foot traffic than just your oddball Caramona Street or something like that. So they will not be uniform.
But you'll make the crossings that are heavily used the same.
Yep, yep.
More for the pedestrian than for the car, I suspect.
Generally, you'll see that crossing paint does not affect driver.
No, no, pedestrian. It should affect the pedestrian, right?
Well, it should show them where they're supposed to cross.
That's what I mean.
But drivers tend, tend to not use it as well as they should.
No, I think it's for the pedestrian.
Yep.
I don't, I, I guess if the driver's looking down at the ground, it's probably not great for anyone. But, um, okay, I just was curious if that was part of their project.
Question, pegging, pegging on that, I guess. Will this paint be luminous?
Excuse me?
Luminous, so it, so it glows in the dark?
There'll be what they call glass beads on the top of it. We paint it and then sprinkle glass beads on the top of it. It does two things. It helps it hold up better for the plows and it does reflect the headlights a lot better.
Great, thanks.
And what's our cost on this project? This is all from the state, correct?
We have nine hundred thousand dollar grant from the TAP, the Transportation Alternatives Grant. That's a federal grant. And then our remainder will be paid in our state aid funding. So actual city dollars, zero. Um, one of the other big projects that we have is down to the water treatment plant. We're replacing all the filter media. It's something we do basically every twenty years. As a side note to this one, it's about a, almost a million-dollar project. It's really labor-intensive, et cetera. And we more or less have to bring the material all the way to either Austin or north of the cities because of the radium in it. Our last radium result still was high and we're thinking it might be some that's left in the filter media. So when we get rid of that media, it should be the last straw on the radium as well as our adding the chemical to it. So if the chemical itself doesn't do it, the filter replacement will do it. So that's going to start this winter and be completed probably before spring if things go right.
Eileen, did you have another question on the Broadway?
Yeah, sorry, Brian.
Sorry, Brian.
The, I meant asked about the paint material. So are these like the stripes that are going, you know, from, okay?
Yep, some of, some are the blocks, some are the stripes.
Yeah, are they, is there anything in them, do the glass pieces help with gripping? Yeah, traction? Because we have some on Walnut and Second and it rained and I walked across and I almost ate it.
Yeah, these definitely should.
Yeah.
If we do plow across it a lot, some of them are going to disappear. I mean, it's not, it's not foolproof by any means, but it's better than straight up like dust paint or epoxy paint.
In, in general, paint is going to be slicker than the asphalt that it's on. And then when you have environmental stuff like oil and whatever else that gets on there, it can get even more slick.
Yeah.
That's the cyclist in me. We've learned that over the years. Don't turn on no white light.
Slowing down on Broadway.
Yep. Yep. Okay.
Another big project that we have is the, at the sewer plant, replacing building or upgrading a building. So our electricals protected, that you'll see that in the sewer section. Some of the electrical we have, we have some shorting problems and everything else because sewer is a very caustic environment. As we all, all well know, the gases, they make electricity and electrical panels rust really bad and makes it dangerous to work on. And that's, it's a very good project that'll separate that from sewer gas. Have an HVAC system to keep that clean and free of that so that, a lot of preventive and safety measure maintenance on that one. The other big projects that we have for roads are, as you may well know, we have a Mankato project coming up. More MINDOT-based than us, but obviously it definitely affects us. You know about the four roundabouts, you know, I don't know, did you attend the other night? They, they had the open house. I saw Pam there. I thought I saw you, but maybe you didn't attend.
I did not.
You've been at the other ones.
Right.
Look-alike, George, your look-alike was there.
I sent my twin in.
There was a guy like George there. Yes, yes.
Do you have hair?
No, George.
It was Chad.
Really good-looking guy.
Oh, okay, that wasn't me.
Really sharp, really sharp guy. Anyhow, I'm all well aware of it, obviously, you know. Plead with the constituents, everything else, it's going to be, it's going to be gruesome during construction. You know, there's a pretty good traffic control plan, a pretty good staging plan, but it is construction. It's, it's a big one. It's a heart of our town, twenty-plus thousand cars a day on that road. If you need to shop there, please shop there. Please frequent the, the shops and the stores and everything else out there. They're all going to be accommodated. There will be two entrances on each side open at all times during construction. Hospital, obviously a very important animal out there, keeping that thing open and accessible at all times. And then the side, the east side for all the businesses and such. But it will be a pain in the butt. If you don't, if you don't have to go there, maybe find a different route.
Brian, I know they told us this, but I'm hoping you can remind me, where are they starting and when are they starting? Are they starting on Mankato sixty-one or on Sarnia forty-three?
It's, it's kind of more of an east side, west side thing, though.
So to me, that is very confusing. It all seems east side to me. It all feels east.
All at once.
Oh, yeah. So you mean they're going to do one side of the road and then do the other side of the road?
Yeah, being, being it's a four lane of traffic right now, they're going to try to keep two lanes going each direction. So then they keep two lanes active on the east side, two lanes active on the west side after they get the east side built. That's why I say it's loaded. You're going to build half of a, half of a roundabout and it'll look goofy.
Okay, that helps, though. I had quite a few people ask me and I said, you know, I don't know how you go about building four roundabouts, but.
And truth be told, MINDOT will come up with a plan and then they'll show it to the contractor and then they'll revise the plan on how, you know, contractors have done this their whole career. They, they know some, some things that may work better. And, you know, there's a value engineering part of it that it'll probably be adjusted from whatever plan they put forward.
And this is twenty twenty-two?
This is twenty twenty-two, depending on whether they should start in April. You know, but there was a couple of years ago that we thought we'd get a Levy Park project done in April and it didn't start till mid-May. You know, if you get bad weather, it, it is going to shove things. It's going to be a tight schedule. I really hope we have a nice April and can start it early because it's going to be all of eight months that's going to need it for that construction. So, yeah, that's, that's pretty huge. The other big project that we have that's more city-related.
One second, Pam, did you have a question?
I did. I was at that, at that open house and I talked to a few people about the project. And it, it, it just gave me an idea that maybe the city and MINDOT should work together and find some way of introducing these roundabouts to people who may not ever have left, left, have never driven a roundabout before. They don't know what to expect. So I don't know what kind of training you can do for people to help them figure out how, how, how to deal with this.
I, I know one of the things that they're going to do and we've worked on is little boards at all the major department stores, hospital and stuff in the area. They're probably going to put some boards up during construction that for people that are during there. I know they have a website page that does show, you know, how to, how to contemplate these roundabouts and et cetera. That's.
I think there'll be ample road signs.
Oh, gosh, there's going to be road signs. There's going to be overhead road signs all above, you know, pointing which direction and everything else.
And you can circle that as many times as you need to to figure out how to get off, right? I mean, there's nobody there that says that was for us. Out of the way. I mean, essentially, they can go until they feel comfortable merging. It's not like there's traffic that's, you're holding up at a stop sign because you're afraid to go. It's literally, you can just circle. I'm picturing some, some movies in my head right now, but we're just.
Yeah, that, that's certainly, you know, that, that was actually recommended to a couple of people during the meeting the other night is if you're confused, take another loop. You know, you're not going to hurt anything. It's, it's probably prudent at most ventures. And, you know, out-of-town people, they're probably using Google Maps. Google Maps tells you, take the second exit. You know, that it's, it's, it's pretty, you know, there, there's, they're all over nowadays. You can't hardly go to a town and not find a roundabout, you know, at least a fairly major city. I think people are more used to them than you think. But there's, you know, there's local traffic that hasn't contemplated a lot of them.
They'll have to come to one on it to have four in a row.
That's true.
Almost five. You got the one on the road.
That's, oh, that's right.
Yeah.
Well, in the future, I mean, that's all the state is building. I mean, you know, my grandkids and your grandkids and children, that's what they're coming up on. And I just go back to the interstate bridge, how bad that project turned out. Oh, you can't this and you can't that and you can't this. There's nothing matter with the bridge.
Oh, I thought you were serious, George. I'm like, it works perfectly. I don't know what the problem is.
Oh, you can't take two lanes into one and you can't this and you can't make a left. It's perfectly fine.
I thought I saw Aaron with a question. Was I?
No.
Oh, okay, okay.
Any other questions?
Taken aback about the bridge comment because he likes it, right?
A bridge is fine.
Any other questions before we move on to the next topic? No? Okay.
Okay, and then we've got Sue's, sorry, we've done Sue Street, South Baker Street. We may redo Sue again. No, South Baker is our state aid road. We'll do it from a Sarnia and I think we'll get all the way to Fifth, depending on how much we have in our account. Worst-case scenario, we get to Sixth Street. We've been working diligently at getting the railroad crossing state aid streets done. And this will be one of our last ones. So we'll have that completed and then we'll work on our next railroad crossing street. And then our final bigger project is one that we all like is the Mill and Overlay Project. We're kind of scheduled to be in the Mill Street area near the school. There's a lot of not-so-great roads around there that need a Mill and Overlay. So that's where we'll be with that next year. If there aren't any questions, we'll go on the budget because.
All right.
You got a big jump there.
Yeah.
All right, we're starting on page one. And I'll, I'll just kind of go through the public works type of revenues. You know, a lot of these are not public works related. Some are pretty minor. The first one we have is sanitary sewer permits. That's generally what we get, you know. It all depends on how many permits are needed. So it's an estimate as much as anything else, the same with stormwater permits, that's right below it. Further down there, very similar to the last ones are concrete license, right-of-way registration, water permits, signed permits. It's, it all depends on how many projects are done. That's, those are pretty good standard, what we get year-by-year estimates for revenues on those. Same with drain layer license, very similar, water elevation certificate is very similar. Uh, same with drain layer license, very similar. Water elevation certificate is very similar. Yeah, municipal state aid streets, that's uh, maintenance, that's what we get. That's uh, about midway down the page thirty-three, four oh four. That's our maintenance allotment that we get from state aid that goes directly for our maintenance of. Salt, sand, et cetera. Same with the county grant. The county gives us about fifty percent of our maintenance for Sarnia Street, County Thirty-two Gilmore. And that is the amount that we have there. So going on to page three. That's what we paid us to finance for water utility. At thirty-three, one, nine, zero, nine, nine. That's paid to finance because they do all the billing and everything else for our sewer water. And.
I don't see nine.
I don't need, I don't see that either.
That's a thirty-four, one oh six.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh. Oh, we were all looking for thirty-one, nine oh nine.
That's a new, that's a new code. Then we go down to thirty-four, three oh one, near the bottom of the page, another estimate for uh. On to the next page. We've got the Marina down thirty-six, three oh one. That's uh, estimate from what we get for gas. Revenue from Dix Marine, pretty, pretty much taking it from what we got from last year. And going to the final page, I do not see anything. So that's our revenue portion from the first five pages. So now we'll go to page forty-six.
Mayor, just one question.
Hi, George.
I see you're in reserves, uh. Uh, use of reserves, five hundred thousand dollars. That was in twenty twenty-one. I believe it's in twenty twenty-two. Thirty-six, three oh nine, down in there.
Right, that's the plug number for balance.
Okay. And where does that money come from?
It comes from the general fund reserve.
Okay.
Right, that's the carryover. Right, that's the carryover.
Is that, and I I I had, I didn't know this would come up now. Is this? Is this in Brian's purview? This carryover?
No, this will be tomorrow.
All right. I didn't expect it to come up now, but I had, I had my eye on that. So that'll, we'll, we'll be back to that line?
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, then that'll take us to page forty-six. Flood and storm control. The maintenance, et cetera, that's just our general maintenance of forty-two, nine, sixty count. Uh, that's keeping trees off the levee. Pump station repairs, electrical, that kind of thing. Um, obviously estimates, but you know, we've got a pretty good. Track record of what goes on every year. There are other purchase services is more or less insurance and the standard type stuff like that. Going to supplies. Again, you know, electricity obviously depends on. The high water events. If we don't have high water events, we pay a lot less than electricity. If we have a very long high water event, we pay more in electricity. But that's a year to year type of average. So we're just kind of. Well, we we'd all like a low, low flood event. And that's pretty much it because we don't have, uh, we don't have our. Lining project that is going on right now. So that was the uh, improvements to the forty-two, nine, sixty. But that lining practice is going on right now, so that will not be a carried over project. Next page is page forty-eight, engineering. The first two things, the salaries and wages and employee benefits, that's our, you know, wages and and. Things that go with wages, your comp and medical insurance, et cetera. Professional services, uh, the twenty-five thousand for engineering services. That's when we have. Stuff that comes up and we need to consult out for smaller type things. Uh, just like last year, we spent eight thousand. But we budgeted twenty-five thousand because things like that come up. If we obviously don't spend it, we don't spend it. The other things are more or less contract type things, uh, with the civil three D is our software drawing project, uh. Arcview and GIS payment. That's because the county runs our GIS system and we pay into them to host it, our beacon site.
Uh, if if I could interject, Brian, uh, line three, three, zero, three, engineering services. What's, what's that? Three hundred twenty-five thousand and then recommended down to twenty-five? What, what?
I, there was a. Request for studying the whole city for traffic safety slash pedestrian safety. And just with the budget concerns this year that that it got eliminated.
Good, thank you.
Going down, property services, part of that's insurance, part of it's just a normal equipment servicing, et cetera. Other purchase services is mainly insurance, telephone fee, mailing, that kind of thing, education, travel. Again, if if these things do not get spent, they go back into the general revenue. Supplies, um, you know, our locator supplies to locate whenever anybody's gonna do any digging, that kind of thing. Uh, drafting supplies, which is our paper and stuff like that for printing.
Brian, do we still have our uh, our own locator or or is that contracted out?
Nope, nope. We, we have a, a city locator.
Okay.
Yep. Scott Nelson, I, I'm sure you've seen him out and about.
Probably, yeah.
So that more or less brings us out of engineering. So we're on to page fifty-one, streets and alleys. This is the street department budget. Obviously wages, employee benefits, that's a fixed cost. Professional services, as you see, there's not a whole lot in that. Only five hundred dollars in that. Property services, that's a, you know, just upkeep maintenance type of. Items. Obviously, we have the blacktop services, which is our patching, our minor. Type of street fixing, like the patches. And if we have a larger patch, is not our uh, Mill and Overlay project by any means. Concrete services, very similar. Carbon gutters that may get broke or, you know, some of our concrete streets if they have to be repaired. The next item is other purchase services, which seems to be a lot of insurance type stuff, more or less fixed cost.
Could I interject?
Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, top line, that page fifty-one, uh, account one, one, zero, one, wages. Uh, department request, seven seventy, seven hundred and seventy-four thousand, recommended seven hundred and five. That looks like, that looks like a position, right? Was, was that through, through downsizing, just not, not replaced to retirement or?
There is a person that retired just recently or is retiring at the end of this month. Well, this month being September.
All right.
And that position will not be refilled.
Okay, thank you.
Supplies, uh, that's a menagerie of stuff. One of the bigger ones is black dirt, sod, crack fill, paint, et cetera. That's, that's all of our street striping. Um, some of the signs, that kind of thing. Crushed rock, that's anytime we have to do any shouldering, any catching, that kind of thing. Sand, that's obviously for our salt and sand of the roads during the winter. Resurfacing oil is our seal code budget. You know, that's uh, where, where you get the chip seal on the roads to help preserve them. Blacktop supplies, this is for bigger patches, more, um.
Like utility repair?
Yeah, utility repair type stuff. And also our cold mix, which tends to be. A lot more expensive per ton. You know, if we have a, a patch there in the winter, we use cold mix.
If a contractor opens the road for whatever it may be, and the utility work, they are the ones that need to repair it. Or they bill it to the homeowner and they.
That is not a city.
Okay.
City cost. This is more like if we have water main breaks or a bigger storm sewer, some issue like that.
Okay.
Sinkhole.
Okay, thank you.
Um, salt, that's a big one, a hundred forty thousand. Self-explanatory. Um, obviously fuel is another very, very big one, but that's just obviously filling the trucks. And we've got nothing in machinery equipment. So that brings us out of. Street department. Next one is street lighting. Um, this is basically painting electrically on our streetlights. We have some steady streetlights, but more or less a lot of our streetlights are XL and that's paying the XL bill.
Brian, can you just give a quick? Just like kind of explain real quick, like alleys versus streets and who's responsible for the lights and that kind of stuff. I've heard stories of people who live in, who have a light in their alley that they're paying for that.
Yep.
Yep.
We do that.
Okay.
True.
A lot of the alley people will come together and pay for the security lighting. They make that deal with Excel and as far as I know, the city has nothing to do.
Treat it like a yard light.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
Totally true. It's not very expensive, actually, especially if you share it with a.
Okay.
Community.
Sure, six houses.
It's like seven dollars or something, you know, or twenty for the whole year.
Yeah, throwing twenty bucks a year.
Yeah, it's really nice to have it for the whole community on that.
Cured some security problems.
Yep, absolutely. Okay, thank you.
Uh, central garage, that's our, our first part is wages, paying the mechanics, employee benefits goes along with wages. Property services, uh, that's obviously getting rid of our, our oil, our tires. Roof repairs, that kind of thing, heating, cooling. The other purchase services seems to be mainly. Insurance again.
So I have a quick question. In the street department, are we charging ourselves essentially to do the services? Or are we sending that some of this work out of the, the garage to get vehicles worked on and stuff like that?
Uh, central garage will charge other departments.
Okay, gotcha.
You know, oil change, gas.
Yep.
That kind of thing.
Sure.
But yes, it's just a, just shifting the money from one department to the other.
Yep, yep. Okay, thank you.
But we won't fix council members' cars.
Understood. Understood. Good thing I have the mayor.
And I must say, uh, Amy Van Gilder, she does a very, very good job.
Does a great job.
Yeah.
I'll tell you, you said that.
Thank you.
Purchase services, uh. Excuse me. Also pretty self-explanatory. Supplies, uh, there's nothing that really jumps out there. It's, you know, to keep in the, keep, keeping the garage open. Excuse me. Uh, department expenditure, property. Yeah, no- nothing really jumps out there. I guess, is there any questions on any of this stuff?
Now, we're making some improvements to central garage that should help with the efficiency out there. Is that correct?
Minor improvements. Um, we're getting a new generator. It was nice that we were able to pull the pro build generator and recycle that. To the central garage. It's a very, very good generator and didn't have a whole lot of use on it. It's, it's a good find.
Absolutely.
Fortunate, very fortunate.
How big of a save was that?
I don't know.
That was quite a bit.
Cool, okay.
Yeah.
Well, six figures for sure.
Yeah.
Well.
I figured since we bought the building, we should move it.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good move.
I asked how much we got to keep that was attached to the building. Is there a Monet in there somewhere?
We're looking.
In the ceiling tile, yeah.
It wasn't attached, but we kept it and they didn't take it. So we said, we'll use it.
Good move.
Public works. That's uh, basically me. There's uh, not a whole lot in here. We get the wages and benefits. Very little insurance, pretty uh, pretty meager budget, less than fifty thousand. Trees is our next one. That's our tree crew. Yeah, again, salaries, employee benefits are very straight up tied to salaries.
Could I jump in there, please, Mr. Mayor? Top line there, sixty-one, I'm seeing a sixty-three thousand dollar difference. Is that, is that a? Is that a person? Is that a, is that a position?
Yeah.
Downsize, tree crew.
Yeah, actually, it was budgeted for last year and we did never fill it.
Oh.
So they, they've been at four and they'll remain at four.
Okay.
How are they functioning at four, though? Didn't they need the fifth? That's why I thought we made that.
We supplemented in the summer with the, with the water department employee, just to uh, help get ahead on the ashboard. It, it worked out really well. We did it for two months and they caught a lot back up. So at this point, no, we're not. Looking to refill that position.
Do some of those tree guys then plow in the winter?
They all plow in the winter.
Okay.
All the tree crew plows in winter.
Yeah, thought so. Yeah, good things.
What I mentioned at the beginning about how we cross level resources, people and materials to the departments.
All right.
It was the one thing we, one thing that we found because we were very concerned about the tree crew. Because of what they do is very dangerous. But we were able to find that cross leveling our employees into that department worked out well.
Very high performing crew, very good crew.
Yep, solid.
Uh, property services, again, insurance, maintenance, same with the other purchase services. Supplies, uh, you know, they, they. They obviously gotta put gas in their, in their machines. Uh, they'll have backfilling, so that's the landscaping supplies. So when they do stump removal, they gotta fill it back in with black dirt. Those are uh, not a, not a huge expenditure. Uh, tree planting is zero and that one was uh, taken out. Our next one is our compost. Would you?
Oh, hold it, tree, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Tree planting. I thought we had seen something a few meetings ago that we were.
Yeah, a grant.
A grant.
Thank you.
And that's why we zeroed this out because we feel really confident we're gonna get that grant.
Okay, thanks, thanks. Go ahead, Pam.
Yes, um, let's see, uh, forty-three, one eighty-one. Uh, it, improvements other than be tree, tree planting, there's sixty thousand dollars requested. What is that? That's under property on page sixty-two.
Yeah, yeah, yep. That, that's the one I, that we just talked about being zeroed out. Like Steve said, we're pretty hopeful on the grant application. Like Steve said, we're pretty hopeful on the grant application being successful and that will help out a lot with that program.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. The next one is one oh one, general compost wood recycler area. That is basically the price of the contract and the contract was bid at forty-eight thousand. There's a small amount for electricity, but uh that's more or less the contract for the recyclers next to the wastewater recycling plant. Yes. Page one hundred. Page one hundred.
Mr. Mayor, I just have one.
Go ahead, George.
Uh, how was that methane gas burner working down by the
See, Joe DiMaggio is not gone. He's still here.
Where have you gone?
The street continues, nice.
Okay.
I'm doing very well. We're actually slightly profitable on it.
Ooh.
And yeah, I mean, it's not a, it's not a boon, but it's taking the methane that would have been wasted in turning into electricity. Uh, it's not as easy as if it was just like a compost pile because there's siloxins. Those people that have more hair use more shampoo and that gets in the thing and that actually is a contaminant to the methane. Then they have to clean that out first. Otherwise it'd be really cheap and easy, but uh
Actually, I know there were problems with it at first, so. Anyway, alright.
That, that makes it expensive to then, rather than after the straight.
He's gonna make it up for it. So many jokes there, so many jokes.
Hey, George, I'm be joining you soon, so I'm not picking on you.
Well, let's speed it up.
Uh, P I R, that used to be, there was a lot of smaller subdivisions and stuff that were in this. Right now, it looks like it's more or less just the sidewalk project. So that's, that's the fifty thousand dollars here under forty-nine, nine, one, one. So the fifty thousand dollars for the sidewalk project. That is the assessable portion. Again, another assessment portion would be the forty-nine, nine, one, four. We offer the people that have service leaks and they can't afford to pay the plumber, we offer to assess that to their taxes. Cost the city a lot of water to pump water into the ground that's leaking. So this is a project that we can get plumbers out there faster to stop the leaks and we're not pumping water that goes into the ground.
So if I'm clear, essentially what you're doing is paying the plumber to service their property with their permission so you can assess it back so they can pay a little bit at a time instead of trying to come up with the ten thousand or eight thousand or.
These service line repairs are very expensive.
Because it's pay on how far deep they have to dig and how long the line is, I suppose. Oh, that's great. That's excellent service. That's wonderful.
Good. So Brian, if you're budgeting thirty thousand, that's, that's in the previous year, fifty thousand, you're, you're saying five to three of these per year. Is that what you're saying?
That's kind of what we've averaged. I mean, we, we get years where we don't get anybody.
And this, this is the freshwater line coming in.
This is city water. Water line, yes. A lot of them are old gavel and ice pipe and sometimes they end up looking like Swiss cheese and.
Understand, yeah.
So Brian, would, would that include like, let's say, Sue Street or Baker Street?
Nope, this is different, this is different than that. This is, if you have a service line leak, you know, if you're
Sure.
If you're, if you're lucky to be on Sue Street and we're doing it, you're gonna get it pretty cheap.
Right, right.
Right, okay. Do we have a truck that goes around at night listening for these leaks?
We hire a sniffer.
Okay.
It's called a sniffer. It's a sniffer. If, if we see water coming up. We, we sniff the lines anyhow every year.
That's who's at my property at night. I knew there was someone up there. Kidding, Brian, sorry. Sorry.
Um. But if we see water coming up, then this service line leak locator will be able to pinpoint it a lot better.
Right.
So that's, we'll bring them in to pinpoint it and then we can kind of figure out, is it in the service? Or is it in the main? If it's in the main, it's obviously our baby to take care of. If it's in the service, then unfortunately for the homeowners, they're, they're issued to take care of.
Any, anything, am I correct, that, that anything that from, from the T off the, the, the main line? That service line is all the homeowners.
That's all the homeowners.
Thought so, thank you.
That is correct. Okay, going into page one oh three, the municipal state aid. We've got the two major projects next year between Baker Street and Mankato Avenue. Baker Street, we're estimating at a one point two million dollars come out of state aid. And Mankato Avenue, we're looking at two point two, but I think that'll be less than that right now from our current estimates, obviously. Whatever it's bid at is what it's going to be, but this is our current estimate of that. Kind of the same thing on reverse for top of that page. So we go into the four oh six account.
What page are you on, please?
Page one oh five.
Okay, thank you.
So we have the curb and gutter project. This will be the city-owned curb and gutter. So we're budgeting sixty-five thousand for that. That'll be our curb ramps, our possible curb breakage slash raising that comes up all over, but it's predominantly our curb ramps and some city-owned sidewalk that, you know, maybe next to a park, maybe next to a parking lot or something like that.
Excuse me, Mayor, Brian, I have a quick question. I've been asked by a few citizens, their curbs are sinking down a little bit and so it creates a low point and it creates a puddle there for them for, as I was told the entire summer.
Hmm, okay.
How would I answer that question when they ask who's in charge of fixing that?
Technically, we assess it. The, the way it's written in city code, it would be the homeowners.
Okay.
Um, we have paid for them in the past if they, if, you know, if it's a city issue somehow like that. And truth be told, with sixty-five thousand in the budget, each one of these curb ramps costs about five grand. They, we do not have a whole lot of money left over for curbs. Curbs approximately forty-five to fifty dollars a foot to repair, remove and replace. So you can't get a whole lot done. I mean, ten foot's going to cost you five hundred bucks.
And then even then, a lot of times that, that sunken curb is caused by some larger issues. So if you just were to pour a new curb, it wouldn't necessarily take care of the issue there.
Sometimes that's correct. Um, most of the time your settlement's already taken care of by the time that happens.
Okay.
A lot of times, real honestly, it's tree roots that raise it.
Okay.
Until you get rid of the tree roots, you're gonna put new curb down and it'll raise right back up in three or four years.
Okay.
But Brian, a homeowner can choose to make repairs to their sidewalk and curb if it's damaged beyond when you come by every five. If I want to make my curb and sidewalks look nicer or improve my apron, I'll pull a permit and I'll do it with whoever. I don't need to wait for you to come along and say, oh, five years, here's your white mark. We're gonna do it now. So I mean, a homeowner can always improve.
Right.
And, and truth be told, you know, if you have a, a dangerous sidewalk, you'd be prudent by doing it anyhow because that, that liability is on the homeowner.
Yeah.
Right, so if, and if a citizen asks me and I would direct that person to call you?
Yep, they could certainly call me.
Okay, thank you.
But you have to be bonded to do that work by yourself?
We do have a homeowner's bond if you are doing it as a homeowner.
Okay.
If you are a contractor, then you have to be a registered concrete license contractor. That way you'd have the insurance and the bonding with the city. That is correct, George. Good point.
So what, I can't hire you, George? Come do the concrete at my house? Is that what you're saying?
Uh, yes, but I know someone that you probably could.
There you go.
Did, did I hear you right that the, the homeowner has to carry a bond to do their own?
It's a homeowner's bond. It basically is showing us that they have homeowner's insurance.
But it's a bond.
They're not actually putting up a bond.
It's proof of.
It's probably a misnomer more than anything, Steve.
Okay.
It's just proving that they have insurance.
Homeowner's insurance, not a bond.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Um, going to page one oh six, this is basically just summarizing everything from the preceding pages for our Mankato Avenue. You'll see from six oh one and six oh two under Baker Street. That is sewer and water cost for replacing the sewer and water on Baker Street as we reconstruct that. And also on Mankato Avenue from six oh one and six oh two, again, that is sewer and water cost from replacing sewer and water along Mankato Avenue. And from seven oh nine is the city share for Mankato Avenue. The non-state aid streets, which are Ruski Drive and Parks Avenue. So that's the city's cost on that. On to our next one. This is the eighty thousand dollars. Yeah, I missed smoke earlier. We're budgeting budgeting eighty thousand dollars for the sidewalk project. That's the city-owned sidewalk, the curbs, the more or less is the curb ramps, the pedestrian ramps at the corners. More summary of four oh six. So moving on to page one oh nine, the four-ten account. First one is the, well, this got zeroed out. This was the city revenue or general revenue for the Mill and Overlay. And that is now in four-ten, thirty-nine, one oh nine, the one oh five and the three sixty.
I have a question about that, Brian.
Sure.
So it looks like year after year, we've been using less LGA for our roads. And now, last year, it looks like we budgeted three hundred and sixty-five thousand. And now you're recommending we take money out of the infrastructure fund and I'm not comfortable with that hundred and five out of the infrastructure fund. I, I actually would like to remove it because I think in our financial policy, it says that if you use the infrastructure fund for this type of project, you have to repay it with interest in a year. And a hundred and five thousand to me. What's, what's the point? I mean, and I, I would rather see a bigger number put back into our street funds. One of the things that Palowski and Miller both helped us for when they raised LGA is that we have a robust street project plan, not state aid streets, but a robust street plan where we go out and we tackle. I think it used to be a million and a million and then it became eight hundred and seven hundred and now we're to three sixty-five. Which means our LGA dollars are being spent on something, I'm assuming operations versus an improvement that the population would see a benefit from. Am I understanding what's happening there correctly?
Um. I think I'm gonna punt to Jessica on this one because the three sixty-five is the number that.
Right, you had to work with. I'm guessing you would take as much money as we gave you and repair as many streets as you could, if I under, I mean, I get that. That's what you do.
We'll, we'll work with whatever budget we get.
Okay. Am I under, am I stating that correctly, Jessica?
Yeah, so the three hundred and sixty-five thousand, that's what we, that's the unbudgeted LGA amount for twenty twenty-one that we put in reserves in twenty twenty-one and we would spend it as the street Mill and Overlay project for twenty twenty-two.
Right, well, I still would move that we remove this hundred and five thousand because when I read that policy, do I understand the policy correctly that says if we take money from the infrastructure fund in a year, we must pay it back with interest?
Yeah, there is a line that says that.
Okay, I would rather not do that and certainly not in this case. I think when I looked at the policy, the infrastructure fund has a very specific use for CIP projects that have been in, in plans for over two years and maybe fifty percent of the project would be contributed by this fund. And it can front crop, front the cost of projects, but it has to be reimbursed within a year. So I don't know if any of the other council will agree with me on that, but I would like to remove that hundred and five from the budget and not use the infrastructure fund in this way. I know we use it on Mankato, but that is a, I don't think we would have been able to afford that project or the tax rate would have been so high. We would have been in some serious trouble. So I don't know if any of the other council agree with me, but I don't want to use the infrastructure fund in this capacity.
I'll give you a second on that for discussion here amongst the members.
Yes.
I, I would agree as well. I'm not, I'm not sure that, that the, the Mankato example is, is similar, but it, it, it looks to me like we're, we're taking from a, a reserve account to fund something that typically we haven't used a reserve account to, to fund. And so I'd be reluctant to do so. So I'd be in agreement on the, the general theme here. Just if I, if, just if I could ask you a question, I'm seeing I, I've looked at previous budgets and I've, I've asked others in my, in my learning journey here the past months and weeks. And it, it does seem that there's been a, a decline in the amount of LGA money that we've spent on streets. And I've, I've heard in past years have been a million, then it's, it's, it's gone to eight hundred thousand, as Michelle explained to us. Has, what, what, in your view, what's happened to that? Has that been, has there just been other budgetary pressure that has soaked that money up?
Yeah, so we're using more of the LGA dollars. We're budgeting more of the LGA dollars to cover operations in the general fund.
Okay, so I think what's happening here, what I'm, what I'm sensing is that we have more LGA dollars going to operations. We have, so we have less money uh, uh, left over for streets and there's, it appears to be an attempt to have the infrastructure fund pay for that. Yet, uh, it's not been what we've done in the past, right?
Right.
Okay. I would agree with what my other council people are bringing up, so thank you.
Pam, you had something?
Yes, I really don't, so please explain to me, what is the advantage of moving, changing this compared to keeping it the way it is?
Well, because our financial policy says we cannot do it. That's why. But I also, because I don't see how a hundred and five to change a policy without really understanding what we're doing, I don't think a hundred and five is worth it. The policy basically says if you have a CIP project for more than two, two years in the CIP plan, you can use fifty percent of the cost to front for funds. However, if you use the funds for another project that is not part of that plan long-term or that doesn't fit with the infrastructure plan itself, you have to repay it in a year with interest. Well, why would we want to move that debt forward a year? For something as minuscule as a hundred and five thousand worth of road. So what I'm saying is I would rather not do that and that we address this ninety, this change in the way we're using LGA maybe tomorrow and in the years moving forward, we used to use ninety percent of the LGA and put the rest in reserve, which I thought was always very prudent because in years past the state has decertified our LGA and not always made their payments as promised, which meant that we had some money sitting around to cover costs and operations that maybe that LGA would be used for. Also, I, I have a great fear of reducing the fund balances like we did for the equipment fund. If you look at our CIP and how robust it was, you'll now see that nothing's coming from the equipment fund because we don't really have the balance there to support it. So I, this, that, that fund was originally established to deal with flooding. So if we take the money out of there for this year and we start doing it year after year, then we have a big flood event. We have no emergency funds to not only leverage against grants or federal dollars, but to just make emergency repairs. So that fund to me, um, most of the funds to me were meant to be emergency use only and this doesn't seem like an emergency to me.
Thank you. That, that seems, that seems logical. Why has it been done this way then? Infrastructure, the infrastructure front transfer. Where did, where did this come from?
It was a, a discussion point for council and so we're, we're hearing your response. We wanted to put a little more money into that particular project, so that's why we did what we did.
So it has not been done like this before?
Correct.
This year.
That, well, there's what, four, over four million dollars or close to four million in that infrastructure fund and I don't think it's been used since it was enacted. And so, again, during the during the fiscal planning this fall, we'd like to readdress that. Maybe the policy changes, maybe it doesn't. That, obviously, that's, that's a decision council can make going forward. You know, we should maybe dedicate those specifically for other projects if that's what council wants to do, like flooding or or other, other uses.
I have a question for your staff. I, I understand Councilwoman Alexander's rationale against having that fund in there. I, I think considering what a large amount we have in the infrastructure fund. infrastructure fund, that obviously, we, we want money there for emergencies, so we don't want to drain it by any means, but I do think that since a lot of that does come from taxpayer money, we should use it for projects that help our taxpayers. What is the, is there a plan for if we are upholding that financial policy and this would have to be repaid within a year? How would we do that?
Again, we'll have to discuss that. It doesn't sound like that's a direction council wants to go, so we'll.
Sure.
We'll adjust accordingly.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I don't want us to deplete our funds in the case of a major, for example, flooding event, because I think those are gonna happen more and more as the years go on. However, I don't feel great about hoarding taxpayer money and not using it.
George? Being on council, we first came in with the Millen overlay project. Now, we started out at a million dollars, and then we got into some times where we had to reduce the budget. Is it Millen overlay? Is it people? What are we gonna do? And council back then decided that we would, I think we went from one million to nine hundred thousand, then to eight hundred thousand. It's always something that the council has, unfortunately, has begun to, to reduce. So I would like to see it come up more, but like I say, it's always, you know, when we're looking at budget cuts, which we're doing every year, that number always seems to jump out at us.
And council, just one quick clarifier, just so we're not, I guess, speaking in semantics. So the LGA also does go to other funds, so it's not just general fund. And you, you saw that a few minutes ago, the library's seen an increase in LGA going toward support for the library. You'll see it here in a minute with recreation. So again, just, I didn't have enough time to look at it quick, maybe we can bring more information tomorrow, but with both the library and recreation fund, I think it's close to sixty thousand additional dollars from LGA is going to support those projects, operational costs for those areas as well. So not, I, I know it's semantics, but not just general fund.
Well, I, when I say general fund, I mean operations, because essentially everyone that is employed or any services we provide are operational. I just don't think the sixty thousand accounts for the million, and I'm pretty sure the old councils wouldn't have minded the sixty thousand for library or recreation. That doesn't account for why we're now at three sixty five instead of nine hundred or a million, which is what we had intended, at least we accomplished for a few years, and it was really beneficial to the community, anyway. And I hate not giving you more money, Brian, because I like it when the streets are done, but I just don't like doing it that way.
We need five million a year to get the streets on a good, fast reschedule.
I would take it, but I don't think we need five.
That's a round number, believe me, very round, yes, very round. Any other questions or points to discussion there? Oh, yes. Okay, we have a motion from Michelle, second from George. All those in favor, say aye. Motion passes.
Okay, that brings us to page one twelve. This is basically the boat club lease fees. I think this goes into an account, doesn't Jessica?
This money comes in and then it is reserved for future use.
High wagon bridge repair.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Jessica, do you have a balance in that account that you can share right now? If not, tomorrow is fine.
Look it up real quick.
Jessica, is this Latch Island Boathouse, or is this? Winona Boat Club.
I'll have Chad answer that question.
So am I correct in saying Winona Boat Club is property of Winona? Or is that gonna be considered Wisconsin?
Uh, no, that's Winona property that happens to be in Wisconsin.
Okay.
Ha, take that, Wisconsin.
We're looking at annex.
You know, because they fall under some Wisconsin laws when it comes to waterway treatment. I didn't know if the, the land that was connected to those boathouses, for instance, fell under Wisconsin or Minnesota rule. That's why I specifically asked that question.
So currently, the balance is two hundred thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars.
Okay. And that money should be earmarked for the bridge. Correct? Thank you.
So mayor and council, just to, yeah, I mean, it's pretty obvious what you just said, and it's correct, but in the CAFR, we listed as established to account for revenues and expenses for reconstruction of the High Wagon Bridge project. And then obviously, it goes into then longer-term maintenance, routine maintenance of that bridge.
Thank you.
One quick question, Brian, when, when we talk about Agam Park, are they gonna be dredging that this year, next year? For that project that talked about down, creating a vein and opening up that area to have a little bit better water flow back in what we know as Sam Gordy's slough.
Do you know if they're doing that this year?
Is that, I know it's been talked about, discussed. Is that a this year project yet, or is next year, or twenty twenty four?
Uh, mayor and council, uh, the DNR, Wisconsin DNR is working on starting that project in twenty one. You'll see here in a minute that it is included in the twenty twenty two budget for the city's share, and we will not pay that until well, after January one of twenty twenty two.
Right, that's right.
But I think DNR is still trying to work through permits. I mean, they, they need to get permitting as well from Fish and Wildlife and the City of Winona, so I think they had hoped to start this fall, if not twenty twenty two.
Okay, so budget wise, that's a twenty twenty two item?
Yes.
For, okay, just. Just wanted to make sure of that, okay.
George, you have a question?
I do remember a few years back, Brian, you may remember too, I believe you were here, the Port Authority authorized some work over there to be done.
That was actually part of a mitigation project.
Okay.
Dredged out the area for the port.
Okay.
That was a negotiation that we were able to use that as a mitigation project, but we only basically did the mouth of that.
Okay, okay.
It did, it did oxygenate that Sam Gordy's lot better for a while, but I think it started to fill back in. So they're, they're basically gonna protect that mouth with this project to help it then fill back in as fast.
All right, thanks.
Okay, on to page one fourteen. This is airport bonding funds, pay, pay in and payout of that. Kind of straightforward. And then we are on to page one twenty seven.
Good after the purple page.
Purple or blue? So close, Jessica.
Blue for water, Jessica.
Jessica realizes that it's football season, she's a Viking.
She's ready.
Oh, well done.
Yeah, I noticed, is there a packer green in here? I don't think there is. Way to go.
So our, our, on one twenty seven is our revenues for water. As you can see, the residential water sales is probably by far our largest than commercial industrial water sales, a small amount for agricultural.
A lot of companies, Brian, have their own wells. I know.
There are a few in town. Peerless ran their own well. There's a well for RTP down by Second Street. There are a couple others, obviously, Mount Europe has one. So yeah, yeah, there, there are some, they, they all generally pay a sewer meter fee because of that.
Brian, I, I had asked this question of the finest apartment, but they told me there's ten million in the reserves, so I'm guessing the changes we made a few years back with our water and sewer study helped with that quite a bit, but that's also what allows us to do some of the projects, correct? That's where that money comes from, the reserve fund to do sewer and water improvements along Lake Baker.
But there, there was a nice rate increase for water a few years back, but not for sewer.
Well, I know sewer's coming because I, I asked her, she said that we're, we're working at a deficit there, kind of, because we're backfilling with the reserves, which are about eight million or eight, point six million. But we're working on increasing the fees there. I think this year, there's a bump to usage fee, and then next year, there should be a bump to not usage fee to.
Accessibility.
Thank you, and the usage fee would be next year, and that might get us closer to not having to use the reserves. Am I correct?
Yeah, there'll be a, a wage study that we present to council, probably mid-September. Uh, it all depends on when the consultant actually, we feel comfortable where it should be.
And so this money is used for any of our major projects or extensions or major troubles, like when a street collapses because a water line broke, or this is one of the funds we pull from.
That's definitely, um, the JB Drive project, the last couple of years, as it's dipped into both those funds pretty hard.
It's great.
But yeah, we also extended water and sewer out to a bunch of people too.
Okay, thank you.
That should bring us through to page one thirty, that's a lot of our expenses. Salary and wages, employee benefits, again, very self-explanatory. Insurance, et cetera, professional services, we have a lot of testing at the water, which you guys should well appreciate. Make sure our water is very clean and good to drink. And, you know, when, when you have a huge utility like this, you have a lot of these miscellaneous expenses that you'll see in the four twelve account. You know, you've, you're rebuilding stuff, your your meters and all that kind of stuff, your pumps, all that has to be serviced a lot. Other purchase services, that's the smaller stuff, telephone, internet, postage, communication, travel. Each one of our operators down there had to be certified every year. That's where the education and travel's a little higher than some other departments. Just because they have to keep up their licenses, there's a continuing education requirement for that. Here's the comical one, the DNR always charges about thirty five thousand dollars a year just to pump water because they own it.
They own the water?
We pay them thirty five thousand dollars a year for it.
So they, so yes, they own the water.
Yes.
Love those people.
Then we have supplies. Fluoride chlorine, the radium abatement, all those kind of things are in this. A, as you can tell, we, we pump a lot of gallons of water, we treat a lot of gallons of water over half a million dollars worth of cost of that treatment. The sixty four forty nine four twelve, that's our media, filter media replacement project that we have scheduled for this year and next. And then water's a little bit different to where we have the distribution, so the, some of our salaries and wages come out of distribution, some of it come out of collection or, uh, the treatment plants. Here, here, here's your leak loss survey that, that's at eight thousand dollars that basically, like I said earlier, we're, we're sniffing water mains to find out if we have leaks, leaks around town. The rest of it is basically maintenance, you know, whether we have a water main break or any hydrant valve repairs, et cetera, goes into that. Same with the project below, we you know, any, any type of water main breaks, concrete, curb and gutter replacement, street patch, et cetera, goes into that hundred thousand dollars. Unfortunately, we do have water main breaks and we have to repair them.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask? Brian, you were on wages a moment ago. We're, we're on the search for a, a water supervisor.
Yep.
Will we? If we hire from within, will we, will we replace, or what, what, are we gonna keep, keep same headcount, we think?
We'll cross that bridge when we come to it, you know, we'll have to evaluate. There, there has not been that discussion yet, so I, I can't tell you for sure. It is budgeted at the same amount, right?
Okay, have we filled the position?
That is currently going on. The, the advertisement is closed, and we have a number of applicants.
All right, good, thanks.
Who's heading to Su, um, the water department right now?
Kind of me.
Ah, the, the urge to hire someone is clear now. Yeah, I got it.
Yep, I mean, we have five operators on staff, so we, we're in good hands. They, they, we, there's a lot of experience down there. Again, supplies, you know, it's a, it's a big department, there are big costs to running a big department like this, so the, you know, between replacement, etc., it, you know, it got three hundred four thousand dollars worth of expenses there. And again, that salary benefits for the administration portion. Professional services. That's a force Jessica's department to do all the billing and collections for our water bills.
Is part of your salary paid out of the water department as well?
Actually, several salaries are paid out of that. Our engineering secretary's got some paid out of it. I do, some of our staff also does. As well as sewer department and stormwater. Being that most of engineering dabbles in all of it, so justifiably paid out of there. So it brings us pretty much to sanitary sewer. As you can see, very similar to water, most of our revenue comes from residential, but also commercial, industrial, agricultural, and the metered type of people, like we talked about earlier with George, your RTPs and stuff that have a meter, that's a big portion there.
In fact, I think malt drop up there, they're probably the biggest user, I think, probably of the sewer. If not for them, these rates would be a lot higher.
And that, that's a, that's a very true statement. But they also put a lot of BODs in the system too, so they're, they're not the easiest to treat.
Yes. No, the, the malt drop, if I'm saying that right, it's the old Frodo malt. Uh, I know we dealt as a council, we gave them some type of a sewer, sewer tax break.
Yep.
And for the use that they do, that has helped keep our sewer rates somewhat down too, because you're such a big user.
Yes, they put a lot of volume in there. You are very correct, very correct. So got me off track there. Uh, we have a bond payment for the twenty seventeen bond for three hundred seventy five thousand on top of page one forty one. Which goes with the next line.
Could, could I, yes, mayor, could I please go back to page one forty? It is some line, three nine eight one zero, it, it helped somebody just educate me there. Why, why do we, I see department requested zero, and then I see recommended budget two point eight nine eight million. That's a lot of money.
That's for the project, isn't it? That's for the scheduled project, right?
Which.
It says payment of the project to replace that electrical building.
Oh, that's expensive, but okay, thank you.
Yep, it's a very expensive.
I, I'm, I'm always, I'm watching here for what's department requested versus recommended, and when I see major differences, I'm, I'm gonna stop, so that's
Fair enough.
Why I'm asking.
Glad you asked. As you see on the top of page one forty two, that's the cost that we talked about earlier, Baker Street, Mankato, the replacement sewer water on those two projects. Administration, salaries, wages, employee benefits, insurance, et cetera. Professional services. Professional services, uh, again, with a department like this, you have a lot of testing. Uh, we, we run samples to La Crosse several times a week, that's where a lot of that testing comes from. The, uh, again, more expenses with the, with the large. Department like this, that's doing a lot of repairs and stuff like that, is our property services. Next one is more or less insurance, et cetera. Supplies, there's a lot of chemicals, uh, we have to make sure before we have our affluent go out into the river. That it is a hundred percent clean, that's the chlorine. And stuff like that, we also have stuff that we had during the process. Of treating the sulfur dioxide, the polymer for belt press, those type of things are just part of treating sewage. And that's, uh. Coming down to property, that, that kind of answers your question from earlier, Steve, um. The one point nine for the building, the slip lining, et cetera, those, that's basically adding up to that cost.
Are you on page one forty-five?
One forty-five, uh, property.
Got it.
Brian, how many of, uh, our employees need to have a boiler license?
I think we just need one official boiler.
Just one person to oversee the whole city?
There's not a whole lot of boiler need, there, there is one down to the sewer department.
Right.
But I guess there's one in City Hall, but. Okay, on to page one forty-six, uh, depreciation, that's. All of our sewer lines, et cetera, that's, Jessica figures that out.
Could I ask, on that, we have, I see a large discrepancy there, twenty twenty was nine hundred and forty-eight thousand for depreciation. Now it's half that, five hundred thousand, why, why is that so different?
So in the past, we've budgeted five hundred thousand dollars there. The depreciation, it, it is what it is, and it just, um, it's. Uh, is adjusted against the use of reserves, so we could increase that amount, but then we would also have to increase the amount of use of reserves. So.
We'll, we'll talk offline, so I get that someday.
Yeah. We're working on, on, um, budgeting appropriately for depreciation throughout the.
Okay, I just see such a large difference, nine hundred and forty-eight thousand from the year prior, then half, then five hundred thousand, half that, that sticks out to me. We'll talk later, you'll, you'll, you'll set me straight.
Okay, we're on to page one fifty-four for the airport. On the revenue side, um. We've got general property taxes for the first one, and federal grants, that's what we're estimating in. For fuel farm design, uh, that's on, we have a airport CIP that's outside of our CIP. And Winona's in line to do a fuel farm, according to the state. And that would be the design cost of it, the fuel farm's gonna be probably in twenty twenty-three for construction.
That, Brian, that, I mean, that comes from the airport fund, I have to admit to you, when I first read that, I couldn't, I couldn't remember what it was. What do they mean, we're gonna start investing in farm fuel, what, what does that mean? Where are we doing this? What is happening? I actually asked Chad about it, and I was like, oh, yeah.
It's not a biofuel or anything like that.
We're not, we're not building a building with the new structure, it's the airport's building for fuel, basically.
That is a thousand percent correct.
I wasn't gonna put myself out like that, but man, I, I'm sure he thought I was crazy.
No, no, there's, uh, nothing like that, um, down at the bottom is hangar rents, that's our average. Income from hangars. Fuel saves, et cetera, brings us to the bottom line of about a half a million. Airport, employee services and stuff like that, fairly small. Thing, we have a, uh, one guy out there that does the plowing, does the mowing, does the maintenance, does everything. Glenn Albrecht, uh, does a great job, that's basically his portion right there. And the rest of it's more or less insurance. And then general upkeep, the NAV AIDS, things like that, to make sure our lights are on, so people can land planes.
And everything's working well with the new building, the new layout and the design and the lights.
Awesome, yeah, well, it's, it's, it's great, um.
The users are happy, they're not looking to move their jets.
Comes, go inside of there, the thing's built like a bomb shelter.
Well, worth the time, then.
Yep, yep. That's it for airport, um, page one eighty, storm sewer. This is, uh, the, the tax that we collect on our storm sewer thing. Help pay some salaries, and obviously any storm sewer related projects that come along. We've been doing a lot of catch basin repairs, it's kind of a. Situation of the time that these catch basins were built, that the concrete wasn't all that great, and we've had to repair. About two dozen of them the last couple of years, and it's not a cheap repair, so that, that's coming out of storm sewer. Um, sometimes we'll have actual storm sewer collapses and stuff like that, that comes out of that. This, this is a big maintenance fund.
Can we purchase some equipment out of that too, like a street sweeper?
Uh, we pay.
We have.
Pay into streets for street sweeping.
Okay.
It's part of our MS four, so as, as a city of our size, we're required to be an MS four city. Which means that we have to track our storm sewer. How, how we're treating our storm sewer.
Sure.
And part of a requirement is street sweeping, so we pay part into street sweeping from this fund. Also does, as you can see, the inlet repairs allows for some rain garden grants, which, you know, we've had a few people do those. Nice little amenity. There, you see in forty-nine, one oh nine, about mid-page of one eighty-three, George is the, the payment to. The street for street sweeping, the sixty-one thousand. And there's more depreciation, Steve, on the bottom. So that's it for storm sewer, and two thirty-seven, oh, I'm passing the purple page for, who are we looking at that?
To the yellow page.
Purple and yellow, nice, nice. Yeah, this is our CIP, um, we've gone through that, it's been updated to reflect the changes that we've had. I don't think it's necessary to go through line by line, unless you guys want to.
No.
No.
I mean, yes, if that is what other people.
We're well past the time I was allotted, so it's up to you guys if you'd like to.
Uh, could I, could I back up, could I back up to rain gardens here, uh, rain garden grant?
On one page.
Uh, this is on one, page one eighty-three.
Okay.
So, rain, rain garden grants, fifteen hundred. Are those grants available, is that, is that?
Yeah, we, we funded that. Um, it's, it's available right now, John actually got a call the other day. Basically, we matched two fifty of it, it, it's not a huge grant, but it's a great little program, if someone wanted to put a rain garden in their yard somewhere.
Good.
Fund two hundred and fifty dollars.
Good, because some of those intersections that are where the storm sewer is low. Where, where the water builds up easily.
They, they could, but they could certainly give John a call and, uh. We, we like that program.
Thank you, I thought I, I asked because I thought I understood that program was maxed out, or is there?
Ah, no, 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 that was, the first call he got the other day was for this year, the first call he got for this year.
The people have used it in the past, have done a really wonderful job.
Yep.
With those, and I like where the city has placed them in some of our parking lots, I think.
And, and, I mean, realistically, you're not gonna build one for two fifty, but it's a nice supplement for it.
No, but, and it gives them outlets to. Yeah, I'm sure John has lots of ideas about the best way to.
Yep.
Put one in.
Yep.
Mayor, I move for tentative approval to the public works budget, the engineering budget and.
Storm sewer, sanitary sewer, sewer, all of them, airport.
Motion by George, second from Pam, all those in favor?
Mayor and Council, um, obviously, Tom Williams couldn't be here tonight, so we had planned on moving me into tonight. If you. Want me to go tonight, I certainly can, my section's rather large, there's a lot of discussion points there. Um, or Mayor, um, and Council, if. Again, you want me to go as planned for tomorrow night, and we would probably just go fifteen minutes, in a sense, fifteen minutes longer, because Tom Williams will be here tomorrow night. So just, I don't want you, we thought maybe there'd be more time, you've had good questions for Brian and his section, so. I, I would leave it to you, just as a courtesy, if you want to continue, we may be here for a little bit longer with my section or tomorrow night.
I mean, I'm good with tomorrow, cause I think Tom Williams shouldn't be that long, and it was already planned, so.
Okay.
Alright, then I would move that we adjourn till tomorrow being seven twenty-three.
Motion by George, second from Michelle. All those in favor? Meeting adjourned, thank you, everyone.
So tomorrow, we.
Michelle had done the second already.